Order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Eleven present, one absent.
Eleven present, one absent. Please note that Commissioner Anderson will be absent tonight, and Commissioner Shea would like to give an update. Oh, sorry. She gave it to me quick. Hey, everyone, please vote. Eleven present, one absent. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I spoke with Commissioner Anderson tonight, and he wants everybody to know that he misses us and wishes he could be here. He's, as you all know, he's been suffering some pretty significant health issues over the last few months, and next week he's having a pretty serious procedure done. So I wish him a speedy recovery. I'm sure he's looking forward to a speedy recovery as well, and I let him know that if he needs anything, to call any one of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea, and a good way to prelude into our prayer here. So for the prayer and the pledge, Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Fellow Commissioners, Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its scope.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 7, 2020 regular meeting. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the July 7, 2021 regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to any items not, that are not on the address, addressed on the agenda tonight, I don't think we have any. Do we have any letters?
No letters.
No letters. So we'll move on to the Chief Executive's report. Oh, did I move past public comment? No, public comments after Chief Executive's report. Okay. All right. All right. So just speaking, there's a lot of things going on in the community. We got a lot of real positive things happening, and then we also have had some community meetings about some not-so-great things happening. And so just kind of want to talk about things. Yesterday, had the pleasure of going down and dedicating Danny Wong Day at the Peking Noodle Parlor. I kind of want to clarify a little bit. It said that we renamed that alley after Danny Wong. It will be an intent that we do that, but we have not officially done that. So we did an unofficial with a sign and everything down there. So we'll work to go through the correct process on that, but we couldn't take that kind of action that quick to get it done. So we'll move to do that, but it is not official yet that it is Danny Wong Way, although there is a sign out back that indicates it is. But it was a great day honoring a great man in our community. And when they talk about legendary people, you know, he ranks up there in the top with the most legendary people in Butte and just a genuinely, just a gentleman of our community. Other issues that, you know, we've seen some articles out there about the Blackjack Mining Company coming and doing exploratory mining here locally in Butte. They did reach out to my office about a month ago and sat down with us. We were waiting to see what was happening within the DEQ and their process. They've got leased mineral rights at many of the old mining claims in Butte Silver Bow, up in the Waukesha area. They've, they're going through the public comment period right now. It's going to be a process for them, and we're watching it very closely on what's happening there. I know there's a lot of apprehension about, you know, opening mining back up with the damages that we've had through superfund and reclamation and things. So we're watching that very closely and determining if we need to do public comment as well. I know that it's said that there's 15,000 gallons going to be used. I know that seems like a lot of water to some people, but really that's a real low consumption of any real commercial operation in a day. So that really isn't any major issue. They will be paying for the water that they use. They'll be on a meter when they do that. They'll be doing some exploratory drilling, and they have the right to do that if they pass the DEQ permitting. They have submitted stormwater permits to us already, and they've also, through zoning, they've applied for their excavation permits as well. So those are the things that are happening. As things progress, we will keep everybody in contact with them. And one thing that they need to do is they need to appear in front of the council here to let you know here, that's part of the ordinance, that they need to come to the council and announce what their intent is when they start these operations. So that's one of the things going on. I did go back to the NACO conference. It was very productive. I was able to meet with both Senator Tester's office, Senator Dean's office, had a meeting with EPA to talk about lead standards as compared to HUD's standards, and was able to talk to one of the members from HUD as well about how those two federal agencies are at odds with each other of the different standards and how it makes it hard for us when we start talking about affordable housing within our community. So I thought it was a real productive time back at Washington DC. Also, it gave us some representation at the NACO conference, which they said that Butte Silver Bow hadn't been represented for a long time. So, you know, they've given us a lot of great resources, and I think that I would like to see some of our Commissioners take ups maybe at the state conference and things and go to some of the things that they do as well. So we'll talk further on that as we go on. We had a meeting down at the, in the Greeley neighborhood, down by Clark's Park, you know, with crimes and drugs and things that are happening within that area. You know, just like all of our different areas, we've got a lot of drug houses throughout our community, and there's a lot of issues with that, and people are fed up. And so we're trying to come up with solutions, working with the community, working with the police department. Officer Ryan Hardy was down there. Commissioner Sorich and Commissioner Reardon were at the meeting, and just trying to try to help the community figure out some solutions that we can all work collectively together. And as you have seen in our meetings up here, it's an issue in many different neighborhoods. It's not just, it's not exclusive to any. So we're going to start working together with some of the leaders of the local community and try to help the situation. There's no magic wand or pill that we can, you know, make this all go away, but we can start working on a solution. Today, I sat through a lot of the ARPA Economic Transformation Stabilization Workforce Development Advisory Commission meeting. They're starting to outline some of the guidelines of what that's going to look like. I didn't take a lot from it today, but I will say this, that, you know, there, I think that there are a lot of programs and different businesses in public and private that could maybe benefit from these, this pot of money out there. So more to go on that. We do have a neighborhood cleanup coming up in Commissioner Thatcher, Commissioner Sorich, and Commissioner Reardon's neighborhood on the 29th, 30th, and 31st of this month. We're going to try to do this throughout all of the districts. This is just kind of a starting point, and this is one of those things that, truthfully, when we start talking about cleaning up neighborhoods, that's also showing a presence of community in those neighborhoods, and I think it'll help address some of the issues that we're talking about with the other things. So it'll, it'll be a good visual for our community to be out and taking care of some of the issues, and neighbors helping neighbors never hurts. So with that, I'm going to stop the Chief Executive's report, and we will move on to our next item, public comment on any item on the agenda tonight. If you want to speak on anything on the agenda, please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and what item you'll be speaking on. Seeing none, we will move on to Section 1, bid openings, public hearings, and our presentations. We have two tonight, so we'll go to number one, petition number 2021-01, Donald Swanson Land Records Administrator requesting Council Commissioners authorize a petition to close and vacate an alleyway that has been filed with the Land Records Office of Plowing Department as provided for within ordinance number 362. And so County Attorney, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication. It does appear to be in order.
All right. Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. And for the staff report, we have Director Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council. Tonight, before you, you have petition number 2021, which is a request from Mr. Halverson to vacate an alley in the Valley addition. Josh, if you could just bring up the drawing, please? The portion of the alley that is being requested to be vacated is outlined in red. Over on the left-hand side is the Casey Street building. This is along California Street and Irvin Street in that area, just south of Casey Street itself. Mr. Halverson owns both sides. He owns the black triangle piece as well as the other side of the property which has his home. He is requesting to vacate this alley, combine the properties, and build a garage on there. We sent out notices to all of our utility agencies, both internally and externally, and all agencies had no objection to this request.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any questions of the Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. I'll call for any proponents. So if you're proponent of this, please come to the microphone and at the podium and state your name and address for the record. First call for proponents. Second call for any proponents. Third and final call for any proponents. And we'll close that part of the meeting. Now we'll call for opponents. Are there any opponents? Second call for any opponents. Third and final call for any opponents. And I'll close the public hearing on this. Seeing there's no dialogue or discussion during this hearing, so now we'll move on to our next item, communication. Number 2021-327, Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Sheriff, requesting Council Commissioners concurrence to conduct a public hearing on July 21, 2021, regular meeting regarding the submission of the Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year 2021, 2022, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. County Attorney Joyce, is there proof of publication?
Does appear to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. And we have Sheriff Lester here to give a report.
Mr. Chief Executive, Madam Chair, members of the council, this is time set for a public hearing to allow our department, to allow the Chief Executive on behalf of our department to enter into a loan application, a grant application, excuse me. It's a non-matching grant. There's no match by the county. It's a justice assistance grant. In the past, we've been successful in obtaining this grant, and sometimes we use it for computers, generally speaking. This year, if we're successful, which I expect to be successful, we'll use it for some equipment, specifically night vision equipment for our patrol division and our tactical team. So that's, this is the time set for that public hearing.
Thank you, Sheriff Lester. Any questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. I'll call for any proponents. First call for proponents. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, we'll open it up for opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for any opponents. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Moving on to presentations. Communication number 2021-308, Denick Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners to authorize a presentation on July 21, 2021, regular meeting agenda to make a presentation on the fiscal year 2022 budget. Director Gleason.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioners, for the record, I'm Denick Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director for Butte Silver Bow. Tonight's presentation will be on the fiscal year 2022 budget. Before you, I handed out some handouts that include a summary of amendments. It's a long sheet of paper. There's also the PowerPoint presentation that you can follow along with. And then I also handed out the revenue section of our budget. I should have handed that out last week and forgot to pass it out to you, so you're getting that revenue section that you can add to your three-ring binders. So for tonight's presentation, some of the information that you've already seen and heard before, so I'm kind of going to go through fast on that. Josh, if you want to move forward there. The presentation will be to discuss the budgeted appropriations, the budget amendments that we had last week and this week, projected revenues, miscellaneous financial information, and then our budget matter, other budget matters, as well as our process and timelines as we move forward through the budget process so that everyone is aware of how we move forward. So on the budget amendment sheet, that's the long sheet that I handed out to you, in summary, what we've, what those amendments consist of tonight is moving the connect position at the Health Department to the County Jail diversion and matching grant. It's a grant that we have received over $300,000 and some odd thousand dollars in and between two different grant sources. And so we have allocated a portion of that salary from the tax-supported general fund into those grant funds. We've also done some changes in the TIFID area, just moving some expenditures between line items for projects that should be capitalized, so no really budget impact on the bottom line. We've looked at also, as Sheriff Ed Lester was just up here discussing the J grant from the current year that he's applying for, we also had expenditures from last year, and so that grant carries over through September. And so we have to make some adjustments in the budget for that, for expenditures that we've seen in this last quarter when we were balancing and reconciling their grant. And then we have also added on this budget amendment sheet that will be part of your Exhibit A as we go through the whole budget process, is $500,000 that was amended last week in Finance and Budget Committee to add for capital improvements based on Commissioner Fisher's recommendation and Commissioner Reardon's second for the improvements in the restrooms in the courthouse. The funding source for that is $300,000 of CARES Act money, $175,000 of a general fund transfer, which is actually funds that will be, when the RRA sunsets, will be receiving about $175,000 in additional increment value. And those funds will be used for this project this year in '22, are proposed to be used. And then the county will make, be making an application to SARDA for $25,000 for the remaining funds on that project. So those are the amendments that we present to you tonight. So we'll move on into the budget presentation. I like the fan in the air coming. It's blowing my papers everywhere. So on the first slide, if you want to go back a slide, the fiscal year '22 preliminary budget, the appropriations are $136.5 million compared to a final budget last year of $140.5 million. So we're currently now with all those amendments between the last two weeks, still at a decrease of around $4 million or 3%. The next slide just gives you some graphs that you have not seen yet, and I like to illustrate these and show a lot of these different graphs during this presentation because you'll be able to see that there's not significant changes from year to year, especially as we look at our tax, thank you, our tax-supported funds versus our non-tax-supported funds, and you'll be able to see some of those differences come out. So if you look at these graphs, like I said, very similar. Public Works always tends to rise to the top as the area where most of the funding by function is allocated. It's our largest department and also has, always has a large of significant projects going on in it. So this is total budget, so it includes operations, personnel, and capital. Public Works also has, consists of the enterprise funds, which are significantly large for the local government, and that's the Water Division, the landfill, metro sewer, and stormwater. The second is Housing and Community Development. For the last several years, that's been our second function in local government. It also relates to a lot of our economic development activities, so it has all the activities of the economic development districts. Mainly driving this one for many years has been the Ramsey Tifid. It's been very, very successful for this community, and so that's why those, that function always rises to the top. And then third is public safety, and public safety consists of fire, police, as well as the disaster and emergency services. So if you want to move on to the next slide, this page just gives you more of a summary of those graphs. I'm not going to go into a lot more detail. I've kind of talked about that. It just gives you the comparison between the two years, '22 and '21, and then it shows you consistently, you will see these functions throughout the government, how they rank. So the next graph. So this graph shows based on expenditure types. So the last graph that you've seen is the budget based on function. This one is, so how do we relate within those functions? And personnel costs are averaged traditionally around 34%, 35% of the budget, as they are this year. O and M costs are 27%, capital to 23%, and grants are about 10%. We talked a lot about these changes. You can move to the next slide. We talked a lot about these changes previously in regards to salaries and benefits increasing by $2 million. O and M costs in the overall budget decreasing by $1.1 million, debt service by $872,000. Our economic development grants and donations increased by $1.9 million, and then capital outlay decreased by $7.7 million. Just to touch base on the economic development grants and donations, that number fluctuates. So it will really depend on what our taxable values come in at, at year end, actually how the year-end expenditures close out, and how taxable values come in from Department of Revenue. And those line items are the ones that, tend to be the ones that are adjusted. So that number could fluctuate some. The next slide, please. So the summary of changes and recommended appropriations. This is a summary that I handed out previous to you. Just touch base on it. Gives you a little bit more detail of those changes, so I'm going to kind of skip over that one. The next slide is also in the packet, if you want to move forward. These are the staffing changes that we've talked about. Just wanted to highlight for those Commissioners that didn't attend last week because it was more or less a Finance and Budget Committee meeting, that we've changed the schedule so you can see the funding source on the far right of these positions. For the most part, those are the funding sources, as well as you can see the unhighlighted ones in green are ones that the council have already proved in some type of action, whether it was signing a union contract or approving a resolution before this body. So, next slide. So I'm going to talk now just about the tax-supported funds. So the appropriations within the tax-supported funds are about $52 million. This excludes intergovernmental operating transfers and compares to about a $50 million budget in '21. Again, in the tax-supported funds, we're looking at about a $2.4 million increase. Overall, the next slide gives you what that kind of looks like and how that's broke out. And I want you to really, you can really focus in on this slide right here, and you can see in comparison to '22 and '21, there's not significant difference, even though there was a $2.4 million increase. The overall percentages of budgets aren't changing significantly. So you're going to see that personnel costs and tax-supported funds are always the most significant piece unless we found some major project happening. They always run about 60%, 58 to 68, 60% of the tax-supported funds. So when we're trying to fix budgets and fix tax-supported budgets, increases in salaries, increases in benefits, they weigh significantly. So we really focus on making sure that every one of those components in our personnel costs are, is tight as we can get them. The second component is operation and maintenance at about 27%. And if you want to jump to the next slide, we can start to talk about some of the non-tax-supported funds, and then I'll jump back into the tax-supported funds, and we'll kind of talk more about revenues, and we'll look at the comparisons between the tax-supported and non-tax-supported funds. So in the non-tax-supported funds, the budget's around $84 million in comparison to the $91 million in last fiscal year. So the non-tax, in the non-tax-funded, supported funds, this year is the driver of why the overall budget has decreased. And I just think I need to emphasize, especially with some of the new Commissioners tonight, that not always is the bottom line that we've increased or decreased a budget, front lay, front paper, or news article. I think what's important to always point out in the, to be monitoring and watching is what's happening in between, because a capital project, for example, can swing a budget by 30 or 40 million dollars, just like that. So there was times when we were operating the construction projects for the metro plant and the water plant simultaneously. That was $64 million in construction projects, and our budgets were well over $200 million. So, you know, you have to kind of dig deep into some of the elements and components of the budget. So tonight, I'm giving you overview, but please feel free that when you get back home and you're reading through the materials and you're seeing changes that you want to discuss more, feel free to call my office. I'll make an appointment with you. I'll sit down with you. We can go through some of these different elements that are out there. If you want to jump to the next one. So the non-tax-supported funds change significantly in the makeup of the expenditure types. So if you recall back a couple slides, the tax-supported funds were heavily weighted in personnel costs. Non-tax-supported funds, just as I'd mentioned about some of the large construction projects that we had had previously, the non-tax-supported funds are heavily weighted, always with capital projects. You always have major projects going on in the Water Department, in the Sewer Department, in stormwater. So there's significant projects happening, as well as our Tifid and our other districts are within the non-tax. Even though they're funded by tax, the increment part is funding these projects. So for our particular purposes right now, they're not illustrated as tax-supported funds. So the rail spur is in the, in the non-tax-supported capital. O and M is 26%, and personnel's actually about third in type, which is about 19% of these budgets. So if we turn over, you'll kind of see those changes in a different format on this chart in comparison to how we did. So personnel costs are up 6.32%. O and M, which is significant. This is what I'm talking about. You want to get into the weeds and look at the budgets. This is huge. The O and M costs dropped 7.24%. That's when you want to start getting in and looking in the elements and seeing that we were able to do some of those cost reductions. It's significant. Debt service always fluctuates. It's mainly based upon the debt service schedules. We've talked about that several times on how our bonds are sold out, so those tend to fluctuate. It's a little even more significant this year of an increase because the Tifid will be sunset- be sunsetting, and they have two bond issues outstanding, so they'll be making their final payments before June thirtieth of 2022. So both payments are in, they normally make payments in July and December, and actually do January first, but, so, but now we'll be making duplicate payments because, in July of next, or June of next year instead of July one of '22 because of the sunset of the district. So we have to make sure that there's sufficient cash to meet all the debt service prior to its sunsetting. Capital grants, or grants, I'm sorry, not capital grants, grants increased, again, that could change just based on taxable values. And then capital's down, like we had mentioned, the most significant element driving our budget down this year is capital, and it relates to the work at the Stone Park being completed, as well as the shop relocation project being completed from the prior year. We haven't talked a lot about the next element, which is the revenue projections. I think we always tend to focus up here in, in council chambers more on the budget and expenditure side. In my office, we look at the revenue side and say, can we afford before we bring it to you? So on the revenue side, you'll see, I just show you this slide just to show you the many different sources of revenues that we have in this local government. As you can see, taxes run about thirty percent of, and in this case right here, I'm showing the tax, total taxes of the government, so that also includes the taxes of the economic development districts. You'll see it's only, it's thirty-one percent of our, of our revenue sources are taxes. And then we have state and federal grants at twenty-five percent roughly, and then charges for services. If you added the charges for services plus the special assessment, they're around twenty percent of the budget. Let me turn to the next slide. So the source of revenue in the tax-supported funds is twenty-seven million dollars, I'm projecting this year will be property tax revenue, which is fifty-two percent of the appropriations in the budget. So roughly half of the appropriations in the tax-supported funds are funded by property taxes. The others are user fees, grants, state entitlements, federal entitlements, there's a lot of other sources, as you could see from the previous page, even though that was all budget, all budgets, there's many different sources of revenue that feed into the local government. And just a note on that page as well, you'll see that some of the other tax revenues come in, and those are about thirty-three percent of the budget. The remaining percent, if you're doing your math here, you'll see it doesn't add to a hundred. So we have a lot of funds either that we've collected a grant prior to, so we have the funds on hand and are spending those funds down. That would be the high dollar ones this year, of course, would be similar to like CARES Act funding or ARPA funding. But in other situations, we do have projects that are not reimbursable, we receive the funds upfront and then spend down later, similar with our entitlement money. So like, the state of Montana entitlement payments are done quarterly, we just got the fourth quarter entitlement payment at the end of June, so we have those funds on the books to spend to the next. So it's kind of like a different type of cycle. The next slide, please. This is just a quick slide on the trend in our taxable valuations. We look at this carefully to make sure that we're not seeing something abnormally happen with our taxable values. Right now, I even hate to go on the record to say this because it just could change significantly, but I'm thinking we're going to be right around a five percent increase in our taxable value for this next coming year. And then the next slide is the major source of revenues for non-tax-supported funds. So again, meaning the landfill, the water division, all of our grant funds, our reclamation department, all those funds consist of the non-tax funds, and we're looking at around twenty-seven point three million, or thirty-two percent of the appropriations are for user fees and special assessments. So again, user fees being water, landfill, special assessments being the road district, the lighting district, the hydrant district, those assessments. Tax increment revenue, we're projecting around seven point five million dollars for all the different districts. In the state and federal and private grants and donations, we're looking at around twenty-eight million, so that's very, we're very fortunate here in this community, we have a lot of people that actively seek out state and federal grants. And so this also includes some, some of our entitlement payments as well, and our payment in lieu of taxes from the federal government. And then health insurance premiums this year will be around three, three-point-two million or four percent of the appropriations. Carrying on to assessments and users fees, just a little bit more, go ahead. I like to make sure that everyone's aware at this point in the budget process that we've evaluated the enterprise funds, which is a requirement that we do this to make sure that the rates that we're charging are sufficient at, at least to meet the O and M obligations, and we're also meeting the capital obligations. So we will have no increases, or be proposing no increases at this time for metro sewer, storm water, water utility, or solid waste for disposal charges or collection. We'll also be looking at no increase for the county road maintenance district, it will remain at eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents per parcel with a market value in excess of five thousand dollars. And then for the fees for fire hydrant and lighting districts, those are assessed on actual costs, and the rates are established at resolution once we get the year-end numbers and we finalize the FY22 budget numbers. Those are fees that are passed on to us by Northwestern Energy, for example, in the lighting districts, and we pass them on to the districts. And so we set those fees in a separate resolution. I wanted to spend a little bit of time on some other budget matters. I know several years ago, so some of you have been here a while, have kind of heard me talk about this many, many times, so bear with me, but we do have a few new ones, so I want to talk about that. So if we projected, and I'm going to show you how you calculate taxes, because I think that is really, really important, that people understand especially how a residential property tax is calculated. So we project our mill value based on the assessed value the Department of Revenue gives us, total for our whole district, for our whole county, or it's for the fire district and road district, or what district it's in. This is countywide. If we project a countywide mill value to be seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, if you look at the varying market values from two-twenty-five, one-ninety-five, one-hundred and fifty, you take the tax rate of one point three-five percent on residential property, if you were looking at commercial, it'd be the one point eight-nine. You multiply it out, you get the taxable value. I'm projecting around four hundred mills. Last year we levied around four hundred and fifteen mills, I'm thinking we'll be in that four hundred or four hundred and five mills. You divide that by a thousand, because we're talking about mills, so that's how you get the point four, and you multiply the point four times your taxable value, and that's how you get the property taxes. So for example, if we had, we're looking at new construction coming on the books or whatnot, and we looked at homes at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it would take fifty-eight point nine-four homes to be built at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to raise one mill. I think that's really, really important to point out, that we have to be, you know, cautious of how, and we are cautious in our office, we're cautious, you know, we make recommendations to chief executives, and we make recommendations to the council based on looking at this. We know for new construction, it takes those number of increase in residential property to increase based on the mill levy cap that we have, fifteen, ten, four-twenty is the mill levy cap for how we budget. So I like to show you that, because I think people think that we tax and we get all this money and the whole tax bill comes to the local government. About half of the tax bill comes to the local government, the other half goes to the schools and the state of Montana. And then at the bottom, we do have the tax bill, we have our special improvement districts that are at the bottom of the taxes. But when we're focusing on taxes, I think it was really important to call this out. At the one hundred and fifty thousand market value, we'd be around eighty-eight, eighty-nine homes. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. This one's a little tougher to read, I'm sorry, but it's also important to point out that in this community, we rely heavy on our principal property taxpayers. These are the ten largest property taxpayers. This is for last fiscal year, it's audited numbers, that's why I selected this. So this is fiscal year '20, tax year 2019, with our principal taxpayers, including the values that are also recognized within the Tiff districts and the URA. And so you can see that of the ten principal taxpayers, they make up seventy percent of our tax base. Just want to jump along to another slide here. I'm sure I'll have questions as we get to the end here, but, um, the other question that always comes up is, you'll see when we get through the balancing process on the budget, I will be presenting to you, once Department of Revenue distributes to me the certified values, I will hand out to you, it's called the Resource and Requirement Schedule. It's in the back of last year's budget book, if you want to take a look at it. It shows how every fund becomes in balance, and part of that, you're going to see recommendations for reserve funds. And there's always discussion, everybody has different philosophies on reserve funds. This council's taken the approach to be anywhere between sixteen and twenty percent on reserve funds. The reason why we have reserve funds is cash flow. We've kind of talked about needing cash flow, just like you need cash flow at your home, in comparison we do here as well. And the main reason for that is in the tax-supported funds, and then like in metro sewer or the landfill, for example, they have two paydays a year, November and May. So we have to meet the cash flow demands of those timeframes. We have delinquent taxes as well as protested taxes. This year is a year of reappraisal, so we anticipate the AB-26s going through. Not all of those AB-26s will be completed, which is the protest, so individuals can protest on their appraisal. Not all of those will be finalized when I get the certified values, but when the Department of Revenue gives me certified values, the state law dictates that I have to use a hundred percent collection and have to use their value. So I can't adjust their values when I'm setting the budget. So we need reserve funds because we know that doesn't always happen, and we know that we have changes from the time the values are certified till the time the treasurer's office and my office bills and the Cessar bills the property taxes. Grant funding is significant, we're very fortunate to have it, but a majority of the grants we receive are reimbursable, so we have to have the cash out front if we're going to seek these grants and these opportunities so that we can later get reimbursed and pay, we have to pay for the cost first before we can get reimbursed. I had previous mentioned that a lot of our revenue sources are strong in federal and state funding, so a lot of these funding sources come in quarterly, or they come in one time at the end of the year, in June. And so we have expenditures from July all the way through June, they're one-time funding source. A big area that has always helped why we've had reserves, and it's been extremely helpful in our bonding, and our bond rating is our liquidity ratio. So just like you, when you're getting a credit, when you're out there buying a house, or buying a car, or whatever you may be purchasing, they're looking at your liquidity and giving you a bond rating. And that's what we have been very successful in because of our reserves. Again, we talked about the service billing, so we do a service, then we bill, and then we get paid, but we're paying our people to do that service, no different than any other entity, and then emergency serving fun, services. So I think too, that I needed to point out, that reserve funds don't just sit in the bank. We actively invest them as much as we can under state statute. So we are earning interest earnings off those funds as well, which then build into the revenue source that help offset any increases in property taxes or rates later. So we jump on again. So I'm kind of jumping all over here, but I want to share a lot of this information since we have so many new bodies up at the commission. So the COVID-19 response and recovery, just want to discuss CARES Act funding with you. We received around seven million dollars in CARES Act funding. This does not include all the funding that we received, we did receive some additional pots of money that are, were separate, that weren't direct. So they were more related to like the health department funding that they had received last year, around two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding for response to CARE, to the COVID-19. We received some additional funding for some document imaging equipment and the cork and recorder, so those items aren't in this number, but we did receive around seven million. Between the two FY20 and FY21, we've roughly spent a million dollars. We're proposing in this budget for some of those items that we've proposed around four million using those funds, and then saving or reserving two million of those funds, the remaining funds, for the what-ifs. What if we have additional testing that needs to happen? We don't really know where we're at with this pandemic right now, and, and what needs will we have running down in the future? The large items in this year's budget that we're proposing to be funded are one point three-two million, it's the phase two, phase three of the communication upgrade, it's the next step in the radio project. And then some, we have a five hundred thousand dollars matching fund that you've already dedicated for the marketing campaign with Town Pump Corporation, and then we have some other items. We have a government building lighting upgrade with, for four hundred and fifty thousand, that's upfront cash, but over time will pay back because of the switch out to LED lighting, so we have a payback on those funds. So that's example of the funding that we have in the budget. So we'll jump on to the ARPA funding, which is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I think there's a lot of conversation about these funds, and we're all still trying to get a handle on what it all means, but for these funds, I can tell you, we're getting pretty comfortable on this set of funds, I guess, I would say. So we have opportunity, I would say, on infrastructure side right now, without the new infrastructure build, just American Rescue Fund Act, we have these three pots of funding pretty readily available. So Pot A is the Treasury Local Recovery Funds, we're referencing Pot A, that's kind of the lingo that the state is starting to use too. So Pot A funds, Butte Silver Bowe will receive eight point nine million in the city allocation, and six point seven-eight million in county allocation, for a total of fifteen point seven million. We've received half of this funds to date, we, my office applied and received these, half of these funds in June. We are under the US Treasury guidance for this, and I'll talk next about some of the high-level guidance for these funds. Pot B is the state of Montana Minimum Allocation Grant. It's kind of based on, pretty much based on our gas tax allocation that the communities get. There's five point five million dollars available in this pot of money. However, Butte Silver Bowe has to match with three point nine million dollars in order to get the five point five million. So we're working on different projects that we have, will be working on in the water and metro, in, in those areas, storm water, and using those funds as matching funds to apply for this five point five million dollars. And then Pot C is another fund of, of money that the state is holding for competitive grant program. You have authorized as the council for the local government to apply right now. We've applied for a little over a million dollars in this pot of funding, the project is the Rocker Water and Sewer Project, and we made application for that project last week. The Pot A, or let's, I'm going to jump, skip Pot A and jump to Pot B and C first. So Pot B and C eligible projects fall under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So in short, pretty much water, sewer, storm water projects. That's, and it's not all water, sewer, and storm water projects. So right now, we have petitioned, and the state of Montana has actually asked for clarification with the US Treasury if these funds could be used for dam work. So one of our other high priorities that came out of the ARPA committee was to see if these funds could be used at the Basin Creek Dam. And so we're waiting for that to come back, that's why we did not apply for it, it wasn't, currently is not a project that could access these, the Pot B funds at this time, or Pot C, I'm sorry, funds at these time, at this time. We will be looking at other projects and have them in the hopper and ready to go in case the dam, we cannot apply for the dam project, but we will submit another application for Pot C funding. We believe the next round of funding will be sometime in December or January. It all depends upon the number of applicants that they just received in July, because we've also heard that there wasn't significant number of applicants in July with shovel-ready projects, that it might be sooner, October or November, so we'll be working on that. The Pot A money, if you want to turn the page, or turn, Pot A money's a little bit different, again, that's direct money. We receive the county money, it's kind of different. We received the county allocation we had to apply for at the federal level. Our city portion, so we have two different processes that we have to follow, two different reporting requirements we have to do. And so the city money will flow through the state, but we still have reporting obligations on the city money back to the federal government. on the city money back to the federal government. The county will be directly with the federal government. So the primary use of Pot A funds is to support public health response, address negative economic impact, replace public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers and water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So the, right off, I can tell you, replace public sector revenue loss was kind of an eye-opener for all of us. We thought for sure that when they came out with that direction and guidance, that we were going to be able to use these funds and directly place some of the funds back into the areas that lost revenue. Parking, the parking garage, you know, without Northwestern, people working uptown or other entities in the area working, the parking garage has not been full and the leased spaces were not leased. They lost significant revenue. As well as the civic center, for example, is another prime, when all the sporting, every, all the activities were canceled, right? So significant revenue loss in those areas, but you have to look at the total government as a whole. And you have to look at like lost revenues for property taxes, lost revenues for grants, we have to pick up all of our grants. The ARCO money, everything. It's encompassing of countywide, so we will not be able to qualify. It'd be very difficult to qualify any of our funding uses for lost revenue. But we will continue to work with the ARPA fund, or ARPA committee to move forward and then we'll come to you as we discussed previously, it'll be kind of like a separate budget process with you on these projects that we will be recommending and will be recommending as grant match as well. So stay tuned for more on that, if you want to move on. So the next steps in the budget process will be that we will be able to continue to discuss the budget next week, if you so desire, in the committee of the whole. The schedule is that we receive certified values on AKES 2nd. It's still looking like that's potential, that we'll be receiving the certified values from Department of Revenue then. The public hearing after tonight will be scheduled to begin on August 4th, and we say begin on August 4th because it doesn't close the same night. This public hearing continues until the council is ready to set a final date to adopt the budget. So it can be the next week, which I put on here as just a placeholder, it can be two weeks from then. It's what this council chooses to set as the date for adoption of the budget. So without that, if there's any questions, I'm sorry, I tried to get through this as fast as I could, I know the heat's killing everybody, so, including me.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you very much for the presentation, really cleared things up. A lot of times it's clear as mud, but it helps. I guess I just got, I actually got a couple of questions, but you know, the one is primary Pot A funds, primary use of Pot A funds, what's considered address negative economic impact? What would that be, an example of that be?
Commissioner Sorge, Director Gleason.
Yeah, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioner, we're still working through all the little elements of what that actually means and how, and then presenting, we'll be presenting again, I believe, well, we have another ARPA meeting coming up here, to give them more idea of what economic impact means. When the Treasury came out with guidance, they focused heavily, and so we kind of got a handle on what water, sewer, and broadband means, even though broadband talks about things that are way above me when it comes to speeds up, speeds down, that kind of stuff. But, so we kind of got a handle on that and they focused in on that. They did release more information on economic impact. Revenue loss actually too is another one that they focused on in the beginning and now they're moving into economic impact. I can tell you, I've seen a lot of different things across many different communities of what they're doing with economic impact, from different granting opportunities in their community with funding. However, it's back and forth on what it really means. I am on a listserv for the finance directors across the state, and I've seen some of them use these funds, you know, for loans or grants, and then another community to come back and say, no, you should use your CARE Act money for grants and loans, you're going to get nailed for this aspect of your program, because they'll share their programs. So I guess to answer your question, there's still homework to be done on economic impact just because it's not clear.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Any other questions of commissioners? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Danette. Your knowledge and experience is irreplaceable. I know when I got on here, the commission, a while back, you explained a little bit about how the mill equates to a dollar and how the certified values come associated with the mill. Without getting too deep, maybe just give us a little explanation like you did for me a few years back about how that works. And you were estimating now and the state's certified values coming in around August 4th. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, Director Gleason.
Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Fisher. So everybody always wants just a true definition of mill, what that means. And it's really, it's a unit of measurement, basically, is all, it's, that's the easiest way to say. So what happens is the Department of Revenue, because of separation and segregation, they set the values of the homes in a community or the value of property. If it's commercial, they use all these different methods, whether it's income method, however, they use different methods to assess property. Once those are assessed, they certify a value based on district. So we have many different districts. We don't just have one, we have about 14 different taxing jurisdictions in Silver Bow County. So they base that district and they give us a value. And then we have developed a budget where we know just about how many mills or how many units that we need of their value to, in property taxes, to balance our budget. And so if I had a Resource and Requirement Schedule, it'd be way easier to show you. I think you'll, I think once when we do, or show you the Resource and Requirement Schedule, it becomes a little more simpler than to follow. But based on one mill raising $71,000, for example, and if you need $27 million in property taxes, you're at 400 mills that you have to do. And similar, so that's how that tax calculation works in your handout, is that you take the assessed value by your parcel, then multiply it by the tax rate, and then multiply the number of mills. So you work backwards into it. Clear as mud.
Thank you, Director Gleason.
When you see the Resource and Requirement and you look at, and you follow your own tax bill through, you will be able to see how mills and how property tax works. It's real, it's, it sounds more complicated than it really is.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. You've been real close every year and I assume you'll be real close again this year, so thank you.
Oh, you're asking about this. Don't take a wager this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Danette, I just have one more question, and it's on the CARES Act funding. You said there was a remaining funds of about $2 million. Is there any kind of timeframe, is there a, does that sunset where that, that has to be allocated by a certain date or a certain time?
Commissioner Sorge, Director Gleason.
Good question. Yeah, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Sorge, I should have brought that up when we were talking about the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan funding. So the CARES Act money, we've already met our obligations on how that funding works and the requirements of those funding. It was an allocation to the State of Montana, then we had to meet those obligations. So we've met them, so that does not have a timeline on it. The American Rescue Plan Act funds are very different, for the most part. Now remember, some of the grants that you're hearing out there, that outside of these grants, there are other state grants that they have for broad, additional broadband or additional economic stimulus funding or something that are different, could have different dates. But for these pots of money, for sure, the funds have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, obligated. They have to be fully expended by December 31st to 26. There's no timeline on the documentation or the retention of, for audit periods. So most of the time when in an audit period on a grant, you have a seven-year or 10-year retention of your documents to prove how you're, how you spent those funds, there's no retention policy on them right now because they could, so they can come in, the Treasury could come in and audit you anytime between now and 20 years from now, 30 years from now, until they come in and audit and release you from audit, that's when your audit is up. So documentation is very key in these grants.
Thank you, Danette.
Thanks, Director Gleason. Any other questions of commissioners? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Danette. We had a little discussion yesterday and I've never had anybody that can explain the very unexplainable as well as Danette does, so my problem is trying to retain it. On the reserve fund, you know, I always ask this every year. I know we like to keep a healthy percentage in the general fund or reserve or rainy day fund, same, means the same thing. Can you give us an example of how, what we're planning to do this year compared to last year on reserves?
Commissioner Shaw, Director Gleason.
So Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Shaw, it will also depend on how the Department of Revenue's values come in, on how we can fluctuate them. But last year, if we recall, we did build reserves slightly higher than the 16%. I think we were more like 18 or 19% overall in all tax-supported funds. And I would recommend probably staying around that level another year. I mean, not knowing for sure how everything's, you know, is going to fall out. You know, in the sales tax states, it's immediate, it's been immediate what's happened to them, right? They know, you know, with, with purchases and sales down and whatnot. They're, they've seen some immediate impacts of COVID-19. Ours could be longer term of when we see things happen to us. And hopefully not. Hopefully, you know, I think our community is very bright, vibrant and everything seems to be rolling right along and really picking up. But, you know, on the other hand, there has been some times where we haven't had folk festivals or we haven't had different elements of, of things that might cause even more delay in people's ability to pay taxes or pay some of their fees. And so I will probably be recommending again around that 18 or 19% rate for reserves.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Follow-up, Commissioner Shaw.
I had another question about the CARES Act money and the idea of having just $2 million left to last us, well, I mean, we have until 2026, but since we don't know what's going to happen, I personally feel that we should have as much in there as we possibly can for the future. Nothing against the $300,000 that Commissioner Fisher would like to put on toilets, but, et cetera. But I just wanted to say that, that I really worry, I'm on the Board of Health, so I'm sort of a little more of a knee-jerk kind of reaction to the CARES Act money, because once we use it, that's all we have. And I believe a lot, we already get a percentage of that to the Health Department and we've used it last year, but just a point of reference on the CARES Act money, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Any other questions of commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. Director Gleason.
Yep, Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner Shaw, just so you know and are aware too, so in the CARES Act funding, we have those funds built in. So there's also funding for the Health Department, 325 plus the 2 million left. But in the ARPA funding, we've also made recommendations anywhere from 500 to 1 million in ARPA funding to be set aside and allocated as well. So how that will come out of committee and then how you determine as commissioners, will, that will be how that falls out. But there is still ARPA funding and, and that's the top one, the bullet point in how Treasury expects you to use the funds.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Danette, thank you for all these great numbers you put together. Question on the CARES Act funding, the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 and the communication upgrade. So the one we, was obviously Phase 1 that we approved last year for the radios. Obviously, we didn't approve Phase 2 and 3, obviously, because we didn't have any money. So in a sense, the CARES Act funding, in theory, would save us 1.3 million dollars. Was that a correct statement?
Commissioner O'Neill, Director Gleason.
So Chief Executive Gallagher, Commissioner O'Neill, that's exactly right. We are pretty diligent of how we use the CARES Act funding. So we might be using the dollars for projects that have to be done, right? We're prioritizing the radios or, you know, they're, the programs that they're using today in law enforcement, a fire are working, but they need new programs to work. And that is going to be expenditure that if we didn't have CARES Act dollars, we'd probably be looking at some financing source, another loan to, or, or some source of funding to make that happen. If you look down the list of things, you'll see that that's what we did. So you'll see boiler replacements, things that had to be done, that normally would have had to have been done with either tax, property tax funds, so increases in taxes or else allocating expenditures from one tax fund to another, or it'd be user fees, so water, you know, landfill, those type of fees would be impacted by, if we're not using these funds, the CARES Act funds. So in essence, we are using them, I, in my mind, as an economic stimulus, because we're not placing the burden back on the taxpayers and the ratepayers. We're trying to fund those necessary projects by priority with CARES Act dollars.
Thank you, Director Gleason. Need to speak to that just a little bit too. If you look at it, first responders and people that are on the, on the front lines of COVID, those were, you know, you talk about law enforcement, fire, ambulance, and so we, a lot of the expenditures within that were directly related to, to capital associated with those programs. Any other questions of commissioners? Thank you, Danette. And once again, I got to commend Danette, I've learned so much in this position, you know, her expertise and being able to break this down and explain it to the level that we all can understand is, is a skill in itself. All right. So moving on, we will go to Section 2 Consent Agenda. Section A, 1 through 4, Section B, 1 through 27. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I've, I'm going to segregate the, out of the committee, the whole report, the Finance and Budget Committee meeting of last week.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'd like to segregate item in, in, in the Communications B, Item 22, which is 2021-361, and I didn't do this in order, but Item 5, 2021-344.
Okay. Item number 5 and then item number 22. Any other segregations? Seeing none? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve Consent Agenda, A, 1 through 4, with the exception of the Finance and Budget Committee Report, and B, 1 through 27, with the exceptions of Item 5, 2021-344, and Item 22, 2021-361.
Second.
We have a motion and a second approving the consent agenda excluding Community Report Number 1, 2021-285, Communication Number 5, 2021-344, Number 22, Communication Number 2021-361. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
11 yea, 0 nay.
11 yea, 0 nay. Moving back to the Committee of Reports, Number 1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Report, 2021-285. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I've actually got two actions I need. One is a friendly amendment. I neglected to put the Communication Number 20, 21-285 on the recommendation of Commissioner Fisher and also the recommendation of moving the budget to the full council. So they should have the heading of, or it should be under the caption of pub, of, I'm trying to read my own notes, I can't read my own writing. It should, they should be under the caption of Communication Number. 21-285. That's to keep this, you know, to keep the communication moving. Okay, saying that's a friendly amendment, okay, then I need to make a, I need to make a recommendation that, the, make a motion that a public hearing starts on August 4th regarding the 2021-22 budget. And that's in a form of a motion.
So we have a motion and a second to move the communication to the, for a public hearing, am I correct? On the August 4th regular council meeting. Anything on the question? Could commissioners? Could Commissioners please, oh, Commissioner Shaw.
And also add in the Communication Number, which was missing.
Oh, and add in the Communication Number 2021-285.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that correction. Could Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Whoop, no, better wait for a second. Commissioners, please vote. We're missing a couple. There you go. And Commissioner Shea? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
11 yea, 0 nay.
11 yea, 0 nay. Moving on to Communication, Number 5, Communication Number 2021-344. Ryan Hardy, Buute Silver Bow Police Officer, requesting Council Commissioners approval for this year's National Night Out event. This event is held over the county every year on the first Tuesday of August. This is a national community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I have no question about our recommendation, but I see that Officer Hardy is here and he is our public officer, where he works for the communities with Neighborhood Watch and all sorts of things. But this National Night Out, if you've never been to it, it's at McGruff Park every year. It is quite an event and I just thought it'd be an opportunity for Officer Hardy to explain what it is about.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Officer Hardy, welcome.
Chief Executive, members of the council, yeah, National Night Out, like Ms. Shaw said, if you've never been there, it's awesome. Taking a caption off their website, it enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and our neighbors together under positive circumstances. And we just don't do the police aspect. We have every volunteer fire department, A1, the kids love it, they crawl on the fire trucks and take pictures on the police motorbikes. This year will be probably our biggest one ever, we have lots of vendors, Health Department's going to be there. They were going to ask Karen Sullivan if she was okay with maybe even doing, having a table for COVID vaccines in case there were people that, you know, just can't get somewhere Monday through Friday. This is in the evening. Yeah, Northwestern Energy, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Buute Cares, and all of our first responders will be there, and then a free concert at the end.
Thank you, Officer Hardy. For Commissioners and anybody in the public, this is a great night. It's such a positive aspect for kids in the public to see our law enforcement, our fire, our emergency services, the people in a light that really, you know, that humanizes them, you know, and shows them that they're the real people and it's an enjoyable night out. So, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. And please, if you're available that night, come out and say hi to your constituents. We're going to give some bikes away and there'll be lots of kids that'll be happy and it's a good time.
Thank you, Officer Hardy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Officer Hardy. It's a great event. I, at this time, I move to concur with Communication 2021-344 and place this on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
11 yea, 0 nay.
11 yea, 0 nay. Moving on to Communication, number, oh, motion passes, yeah. Number 22, Communication Number 2021-361. Lori Casey, Buute Silver Bow Planning Director, requesting Council Commissioners approval of Council Communication Number 2021-315. Our request in Buute Historic Trust to purchase city-county-owned property commonly located on the southwest corner of North Main Street and Woolman Street. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The reason I have segregated this, we originally were going to concur and place on file, but apparently, our Public Works Director, Mark Neary, was not able to attend the last Land Sales Committee meeting, and we decided to refer this to Committee of the Whole for another week or two so that he can do a much more thorough review and come back to this council.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
So I would move to refer Communication 2021-361 to the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to refer to the Committee of the Whole. Anything on the question? Commissioner Mankins.
Yes, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher and Commissioner Shaw. At this point, you said that, what is your recommendation? I didn't hear that.
To move the communication to the Committee of the Whole. Refer to the Committee of the Whole.
Just so Mark could be here, or Director Neary?
Yeah. Mr. Chief Executive.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Commissioner Mankin. Yeah, the way I understand it, he was not able to attend the last Land Sales Committee meeting and he, apparently, this is right next to the original mine yard and it has to do with county property, so he wanted to have an opportunity to review it further. He wasn't able to attend. So originally, it was to concur and place on file, but he felt that there needed to be a little more time for him to review it. Okay? Thank you.
Anything else on the question? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I really have no problem with this communication and holding it, but I do think it needs further review because I just don't know about the Historic Trust. And I'd like to hear more about what their plans and terms and conditions are because, you know, we've got to grant money and insurance money for the home at Basin Creek and the HPC or whoever it is. I was out there last week and there's been nothing done and price of lumber is up now so high, it can't even renovate it for what we got, the $170,000. So I mean, I'm not against this, I just think it needs a little further review and I'm looking forward to doing that at the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Mary McCormick is here. Is it possible for her to come up and speak to Mr. Fisher about what the Historic Trust is doing? Is that close? I have no idea.
I think that this is a little bit different because the motion is just to move it to the Committee of the Whole, just to talk about it at that time, and I think that would be appropriate for this, for Historic Preservation Director, Officer, to talk, to speak about it at that time.
Okay.
Commissioner Mankins.
Yes, I would thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher, and I would agree with Mr. Fisher, Commissioner Fisher, on this, that it does need some, a little bit more review, but after speaking with so many different parties so far, that, I mean, it is in a pretty, pretty good spot for Buute Silver Bow, the original mine. And with that land right there, I don't think, with all the complaints that have went on through the housing and the residents there, we don't have parking, we don't have handicap parking, which would be a great place to put handicap parking, or maybe some other rest rooms there. I just don't see, as Commissioner Fisher has said in the past, that kicking it down the can another two weeks, why we couldn't make a motion now and decide on this if there's so many people that feel so strongly that this land sale shouldn't go through and we are the body that oversees this at this point, so I think now that I would like to make a motion to deny Communication Number 2021-361. And maybe possibly if Lori Casey's in the audience now, if she would like to maybe speak before I make that recommendation, or that motion, I should say.
You had a substitute motion, Commissioner.
Yeah, we have a substitute motion to deny and place on file. Any second? And we have a second. Anything on the question? I guess, a question to Director Casey, just, I'm not quite sure if you'd like to come in for a second here, just to speak for a second. Commissioner Mankin, do you want to ask a question again for Director Casey?
I guess with Planning Director Casey, do you feel what the recommendation is at this time, or could you give us a little bit more input on what your recommendation came back with?
Commissioner Mankins, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankin, for the record, I am Lori Casey, Planning Director. The recommendation that you have before you is from the Land Sales Committee. Various departments were there and did recommend approval. The Buute Historic Trust would like to move the home at 121 Aluminum Street from Town Pump to this property, rehab it and sell it. And then that money would go into their trust to do another rehab, so they would, they'd rehabilitate properties, sell them and turn them around. Since the recommendation of the Land Sales Committee, Director Neary was not there, he does have some concerns about the Land Sales Committee's recommendation. He has also talked to Park and Rec Director Lazry. There is no parking along Woolman Street. On the south side of the street, it is all yellow due to the original mine yard. It is a corner lot, so there is restrictions of parking along North Main Street. Just to the south, it is not on this property, but there is a service entrance into the original mine yard for like vendors and different things so that they're not coming through the main gate. So there is some concerns. And as Commissioner Mankin said, we have had complaints in the past between the events and the residents in the neighbor, in the neighborhood at various times, and there is, although there is times when the music has to end and that, there still is people in there tearing down, whatever event they have or setting up sometimes at different times. So he's worried that we may be exaggerating a problem that we've had in the past by allowing a residence to go in there. The Buute Historic Trust, they are aware that this is not zoned, this property, so therefore, anything go there. The original mine yard is zoned, open space developable, which means it's there for events. So there is no protection when this house comes in like you see in a residential zone.
Thank you, Director Casey. Any other questions? Follow-up, Commissioner Mankins.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So just, I mean, just on the fact that it's just not, it doesn't serve the public's interest. I mean, the way you see it, I mean, when you look at it and the events that we have there, we're growing the original, the events that come in, we need that piece of property. Not to say that isn't it a great idea, maybe there's a land swap that can come after this or we can find a different area for this aluminum house to go to, but I think for us as Buute Silver Bow and our assets, I think that's a good piece of property that we need to develop ourselves to help out our public through the original mine, so.
Any other? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Lori, for that. This is in my district and I am well aware of the issues around there I have for 15 years and it's an ongoing problem. But I really personally would like to hear what Mark Neary has to say. He is our Public Works Director. He asked that we take this to the Committee of the Whole to give him an opportunity to review it. Not to say that he wouldn't, he probably, may very possibly feel the same way that Commissioner Mankin feels and I do, but I think that we should at least give him an opportunity to look it through and I'd love to hear his comments. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner...
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'd like to direct this question toward Lori. We're talking about land. A while back, I believe, if all the members remember, we had a person coming to us about a section of land that was up on Buffalo Avenue that contained 132 acres. And the reason being was that this was deeded to Buute Silver Bow. And I think that this would be a great place to maybe look at using some of this property for this reason, for the historic preservation. I think it would be a good place, it would be on the hill where it belongs and where it should be, and I think that as a remedy of not letting them occupy this property is maybe taking a look at the deed of property that Buute Silver Bow does have at their hands.
Thank you, Commissioner Reardon, and question to Director Casey? Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Mr. Reardon, you are correct. We do, we do have lots of land available for Buute Silver Bow. The problem with that, with a lot of our land, just like the 132 acres, is it needs extensive surveying and so that, that does take some time and some surveying dollars to do that. And whether we would actually get lots out of that property, because more likely than not, we would survey out our roads, our right-of-way whis, see what's left, and if it's a large enough parcel, probably put it out and market it to developers for them to go forward and create the subdivision.
Thank you, Director. Follow-up.
Follow-up. You know, we're talking budget time here right now and it would seem to me if we are looking at some of these properties, that maybe this certain department could look at securing or budgeting for these surveys because, as we all know and sitting around this table, is that property is at a premium here in Buute right now. And I think that it would be worth the monies to secure monies for surveying these properties to see exactly what we have. And then we could utilize them as the use comes along rather than waiting for them to be surveyed. Thank you.
Commissioner Reardon, Director Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Reardon, we did put, I believe, between 20 and 25,000 in the land records budget to start that process.
Thank you, Director Casey. Follow-up, Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Just quickly, I just wanted to describe, I guess, what the Buute Historic Trust is. They're really doing great work. I know that there are so many issues with historic things in Uptown Buute, but I'm lucky enough to sit and learn with them about twice a month, and so while I do understand all these concerns and I get it, it's a great piece of land, I do wish, like Cindy said, that we at least send this to Mark Neary for his consideration instead of just kiboshing it right now. Because I think with the plan that Buute Historic Trust has, I think that it's something worth considering, so, thank you.
Commissioner Thatcher. Commissioner Fortune.
I think myself and Mr. Mankin talked to Mark Neary about this and I, I think all the issues Mr. Mankin's brought up are what Mark Neary's going to tell us in a week, so I don't think we should wait.
Thank you, Commissioner Fortune. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. As I stated, I wasn't really against the project, but I really don't think it's in the best interest of Buute Silver Bow to allow entities like the Historic Trust. This kind of stuff is capital, you know, this is private investment. I don't think the government should be, Buute Silver Bow should be deeding property to an entity that's somewhere associated with Buute Silver Bow or one way or another. I think if somebody wants to move that house, whether it be up there or wherever, I think that should be private enterprise. I just don't think that Buute Silver Bow, it's going to look, I mean, to me, it looks kind of bad when Buute Silver Bow is going to deed some property to Buute Historic Trust and then other people come up here and want to get a piece of property and it's denied by the land sale, so I just have some concerns about it. So I think Commissioner Mankin and Mr. Fortune are on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Sorich, and then Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I think I have to agree with Commissioner Mankin's. You know, I think this just doesn't appear to be a good fit at this time. You know, I'm not against the Historic Trust, but maybe there is another place they can go. I think, you know, by keeping that property, you know, Commissioner Mankin's right, we are trying to grow, grow that area up there. It just doesn't appear to be a good fit at this time to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorich. Commissioner Thatcher.
And also just to, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Also just to clarify, Buute Historic Trust is a private entity. Just because they have the name Buute in there does not mean that we are affiliated with the local government, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thatcher. Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just my comment on this as well is, I'm sure we have lots of other land or something. I know it's probably a better fit for it to be, but it doesn't make any sense to me you would get rid of that land in any, there's no, again, the 100 and whatever, I'm not blab, I'll try to speak clearly, but the 130 something acres we do have that we could develop out is just a better fit. We can't give up access or something, it just doesn't make any sense to me if it's, we have to look at what's best for us, not what's best for any, I'm not discounting any entity looking at it. If Bill Gates was looking at it, we shouldn't sell to him either. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to get rid of this land whatsoever, in my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neal. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Mankin's and O'Neal and Sorich and Fisher and Fortune. I mean, if you look at the Buute Historic Trust's website, it says the basic idea is to buy a house, renovate it according to historic preservation standards, sell it for a small profit and put those funds towards renovating more houses. I mean, nowhere even on their website does it say they're purchasing lots and building new homes, so, I mean, this goes against even, you know, their mission statement basically on their website, so I'm in agreement with these other Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Fredrickson. Follow-up, Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. The reason that we have to purchase a lot is because of Buute Historic Trust... The reason that we have to purchase a lot is because, or Buute Historic Trust has to purchase a lot, just for clarification, is because the Town Pump House needs to be moved and it is considered, I guess, a historic home, so that's why they're trying to preserve it, is because it is of historic nature, so they want to move it to another plot, but it cannot stay where it's at, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thatcher. Any other questions? Call for the vote. So we have a substitute motion to deny Communication Number 2021-361. And been seconded, anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change the vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Seven, sorry, seven yay, four nay.
Seven yay, four nay. Motion passes and that's to deny Communication Number 2021-361. Follow-up, Commissioner Mankin's.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. And for the record, nobody is against the Buute Historical. I mean, we just feel that it's a better fit for Buute Silver Bow and its taxpayers here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Sorry, we did want to place that on file as well, I don't know if that was said or not. Deny and place on file?
Deny.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think we all voted that way. Don't laugh at me, Commissioner Fisher.
All right. Moving on to Section Three, Ordinants and Resolutions, Suspension of the Rules for Final Passage. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution 2021-24 by waiving subsection seven of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
So we have a.
I need a second.
Wait a second, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Commissioner O'Neal. Okay, still hasn't. There you go. Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yay, zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay. Moving on to Resolution Number 2021-24. Clerk, could you please read, read the caption?
A resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of the real property described as lots one and two of Block 10 of the Noize and Upton Railroad Number Two located at 750 South Wyoming Street, parcel number 0001394740, in the city-county of Buute Silver Bow, Montana, to GEO Steel Company, in accordance with the provisions of the Buute Silver Bow Municipal Code and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution 2021-24 on final reading, having been passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on final, passed on final reading. Anything on the question? Could Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Eleven yay, zero nay.
Eleven yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please step forward, state your name and your address and what you're speaking to us about today. And there will be a button at the, by the speaker that you can push to, to amplify the
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I'm concerned, I have concerns with.
Could you please give us your name and address, please?
My name is Lisa Warden. I'm a property owner in Centerville and I work as a law clerk in town. But I'm a little concerned about the Blackjack Silver mine drilling and the possibility of it going forward. I looked at the Blackjack site and they state that there's four areas that they're interested in ultimately. One is the Florida Block, the Rainbow Block, Trevona Block, and Chattel Block. And the Rainbow Block is where they're going to start to do the drilling if they move forward. They say in their, there's a, it's BlackjackSilver.com, their corporate statement, that they own four, four blocks of patented mining claims, including mining and surface rights covering more than three thousand three hundred and thirty acres. My concern is that if, if it does go forward and they do find the silver, if, could there be in some of those areas like Centerville and Waukerville open, open pit mining since they state four blocks have patented mining claims, including mining and surface rights? If they have the surface rights, is the council concerned with that and should? There's only a twenty-two day, as of Monday, public impact with the DEQ. So twenty-two days doesn't seem very much for public input, but, so that's about all I have to say, so.
Thank you. We, we can't answer to the questions, but thank you for your comment tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to raise my concern as a citizen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to just a reminder of all the calendar events. Take a look, make sure that you know when our different meetings are. And so with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nay? Motion passes. Have a nice night, go outside, cool off, hopefully it's still drizzling.